Testing, testing. The technology is now working. So formally, welcome to the Licensing Subcommittee this morning. As always, we'll just start with some quick introductions. I'm David Barker, I'll be chairing the Subcommittee. To my left and right are the members, would you like to introduce yourselves please?
Morning, councillor Lewis Chincham, member of the Subcommittee.
Councillor Henry Notting, member of the Subcommittee.
A number of officers of the council with us this morning, advising us and making sure we do things correctly. Would you like to introduce yourselves please?
Morning, Samantha Bond, legal adviser to the Subcommittee.
Morning, I'm John Turner from Democratic Services, recording today's proceedings.
Morning, Emma Rhodes Evans, Licensing Service.
Would you like to introduce yourself as well? And would you just like to confirm who you are, just for the record, please?
So, good morning, my name's Jeremy Barker, I'm from PCLP, representing Tesco this morning. To my left, your right is Hardish Purewell, who's the National Licensing Manager for Tesco. And to Hardish's left, your further right is Adam Wallhead, who is the store manager for this particular site.
That's great, and you are very welcome. You'll notice on the very back page of today's papers, there is the procedure which will be followed. And at point four of that, you will see that the solicitor to the committee will outline the procedure. So Sam, could you please outline the procedure for us?
Thank you, you always seem so gleeful about that. Can I just check that you have got a copy of the papers that you can all see? Lovely. As Chair said, the procedure's just on the back, I'll run through it, it looks a lot longer and a lot worse than it is. And obviously, we are in quite a formal room this morning, but that's just purely to accommodate the webcasting. So, the licensing officer who's Emma this morning will introduce the report. If there are any questions concerning the report, it can be raised then, so if there's anything inaccurate or missing, we'll get that amended for the record. Well, we haven't got any interested parties or responsible authorities present today, but we have got the written representations in the report, which members have had for some time and will have due regard to. So, we'll skip straight over to you guys, just to outline your case, detail the application, provide any clarification on the application, in response to the representations made in the report. Members and officers will have an opportunity for questions. You'll get the final say, an opportunity to sum up if there's anything you want to leave us with, before we take the options from Emma, as detailed in the report. And we'll then just go into private session with members, so they can take legal advice and consider your application. And we'll give you that decision a little bit later on today. The decision of the committee will be given in accordance with the requirements of the Licensing Act 2003 and regulations made throughout the year. Anytime during the hearing this morning, members can request legal advice, so we can even do that in open session as we are now, or in private, where we'll probably just nip out, pause the webcasting, and then come back and feedback whatever that was. As has already been explained, the hearing is in public this morning, in the sense that it's live webcast. So that's all done in accordance with the regulations that were made this morning, and that should be everything for me, thank you.
That's great. And just before we kick off, Henry, was there something that you just wanted to mention, just for clarity?
Sorry. Well, I don't feel it's a discloseable pecuniary interest, I feel it should be noted, I'm a member of the same political party as the city ward councillors that have filed the complaint on behalf of residents, but I've had no involvement with the complaint itself. To the extent it helps, I'm sure it doesn't, we have no concerns or problems at all, et cetera, so thank you.
Thanks. So Emma, could we have the report please?
The purpose of the report is to consider an application for the grant of a premises licence made under section 17 of the Licensing Act 2003. The applicant's are Tesco Stores Limited. The application was received by the Licensing Service on the 26th of August 2022 and is attached at Appendix A of this report. The applicant has agreed a licence condition with South Yorkshire Police in regard to having the relevant CCTV system fitted and in operation in line with their specification. Details of this can be found at Appendix B. The reasons for referral are an unresolved representation concerning the application as being received from the following and is attached at Appendix C. Three city ward councillors submitted by councillor Ruth Maroso. The applicant and the objector who made written representation have been invited to attend the hearing. Copings of the front page of the notices are attached to this report labelled Appendix D. The policies to consider are the Sheffield City Council Statement of Licensing Policy. There are no specific financial implications arising from this application. However, additional costs may be incurred should the matter go to appeal. In such an eventuality, it may not be possible to recover all these costs. The impact of these additional costs, if any, will be kept under review and may be subject of a further report during the year. The Licensing Act 2003 at section 4.1 requires the licensing authority to carry out its functions with a view to promoting the licensing objections, objectives which section 4.2 sets out as the prevention of crime and disorder, public safety, the prevention of public nuisance, and the protection of children from harm. Section 4.3 of the Licensing Act also requires the licensing authority have regard to the published statement of licensing policy in any guidance issued by the Secretary of State under section 182. Regulations governing hearings under Licensing Act 2003 have been made by the Secretary of State. The Licensing Authority provided all parties with the information required in the regulations to the 2003 Act as set out in Appendix D. Attached to Appendix D is the following: a copy of the notice of hearing, rights of a party provided in regulations 15 and 16, the consequences if a party does not attend or is not represented at the hearing, and the procedure to be followed at the hearing. The Licensing Act 2003, section 181 and schedule 5 makes provision for appeals to be made by the applicant and those making representations against decisions of the Licensing Authority to the Magistrates Court. The recommendation is that members carefully consider the representations made and take such steps as the Subcommittee consider appropriate for the promotion of the licensing objectives.
Thank you, Emma. Have members got any questions regarding the report at all? Do you have any questions regarding the report? Then, in the absence of interested parties, it's over to you to address any concerns that have been raised regarding this application.
I'm very grateful and thank you to your licensing officer as well. What we're going to do is just set out a little bit of the background as to what a Tesco Express is. I think that's probably quite important in the context of the reps that have been made, and then try and address what's been said in the representations, if that's okay. So in terms of the application, this is a store that has planning permission. There is no restriction on the hours of the planning permission, and therefore, the intended hours of operation at the moment for the sale of alcohol are from six till midnight every day of the week, and that is in line with the opening hours that are intended for the store. You will see that there is late night refreshment included within the application of 11 o'clock till midnight every day. Let me clear that up, this is not to be a fast food takeaway with hot food, et cetera. It's purely due to anomaly within the Licensing Act. So we have a machine that dispenses coffee, hot chocolate, tea. It's by a well-known brand that might begin with C, but I won't mention that further. Because of the method of payment of that machine, it's actually caught and it needs late night refreshment. So, if you could put the money into the machine rather than via a token, we wouldn't need to include late night refreshment. So it's purely to do with the coffee machine. If you were minded to condition that, I can give you some wording, but suffice to say, we have no interest in moving beyond what we do as a convenience store or bleed supermarket. In terms of Tesco Express, it's the smallest format that we operate. They're always less than 3,000 square feet. This particular site, when we come to the plan, you will see is quite a small store in terms of its footprint. Because it's less than 3,000 square feet, that's why there are no Sunday trading restrictions on a Sunday, and it can effectively operate in the way that we would like it to. Some other key features in terms of Tesco Express, it's a local format, so it's aimed at people who are either living or working, or happen to be present in the area, and want to typically do the next day to a day and a half's worth of shopping. So people typically leave with about a bag and a half's worth of shopping, and the average spend is somewhere just north of £10. In terms of alcohol, it's a small but important part of what we do. So, within this store, there will probably be a range of around 80 different products, the majority of which will be red or white wine. Compare and contrast that to the product range within the store, which will be approaching 3,000 products, you can see alcohol is not the predominant thing that these stores do. If you look at our stores across the country in this format, and we have over 2,000, so reasonably good stats, they typically trade somewhere between 5 to about 11% of total sales are made up in the sales of alcohol. However, key stat in relation to that, well over 95% of the sales of alcohol are linked to the sales of other goods. So it's not people just coming in to buy alcohol, it's typically people coming in to buy alcohol to go with their next couple of meals, or whatever it might be. And again, the product range is very carefully designed to fit into that format. We don't do promotions in this format, just in relation to alcohol alone. The only format of promotions you will see will be in relation to something called a meal deal. So it's where you might be able to get a starter, a main course of pudding, and a bottle of wine for a set price, but beyond that, we simply don't do that. In terms of hours, and I'll come on to those a bit more when we talk about the representations, we have applied for those hours because it's what we're seeking to trade. And in terms of stores that have a licence between the hours of six and seven, the amount of alcohol sales, if you look at it over a year, is around 0.01%. And again, between seven and eight in the morning, it's less than 0.2% of total sales. This is not about trying to encourage people to buy alcohol, et cetera, or being irresponsible. It's about the fact that if there are people who are legitimate customers, and they can pass through all the safeguards, again, I'll mention those in a moment, then without evidence to restrict, our stores are designed so that we can trade in that way. In terms of Sheffield, we have a number of stores, obviously in the city, we're very proud of each and every licence. There are a number of stores that are quite close by to this store, so West Street is one. Air Lane is another. Both of those have licences from six in the morning till midnight, which is what we're seeking here. Again, not aware of any suggestion in the papers, or otherwise, that there are any problems currently with any of those stores. They operate well, and they have the facility to operate from six in the morning. I think one of them does open at six in the morning, the other one opens, I think, at seven in the morning. So they are operating in this area, or very close by to it, within those periods without causing problems. In terms of us as an operator, we'd like to think that we're an excellent operator. We like to think that we've introduced best practice around the country, and I'll give you some examples when I talk about some of the steps and procedures that we have. That's something that evolves over time, and again, I'll try and give you some examples of that. We have a good neighbour principle, and how I can sum that up is, it doesn't mean that... Sorry, the pausing there. What that really means is, we try and have the smallest footprint that we possibly can have in an area. It doesn't mean that if someone says, "We don't want you to trade there", we will automatically say, "Okay, we're going to leave", but it's about being responsible and about making sure that there is the smallest possible impact. And if there is to be an impact, hopefully a positive impact, and Hardish can give you some good examples of that, if you think fit. Again, I need to say this, I know you're an experienced committee, but in terms of the application, there is no cumulative impact policy for the area, there isn't one in your policy. And therefore, in terms of the regime, it is still permissive unless there is good evidence to restrict. And again, you'll find that in the government guidance, paragraph 9.43, that says exactly that. It says, "For good reason, there has to be good evidence." And therefore, in terms of this application, I'll be suggesting to you, there's very good evidence as to why you should grant it as sought, but we don't think there is good evidence as to why you should restrict. In terms of some of the other policy considerations, very quickly, before I get on some of our steps, 9.12 of the government guidance, which is also reflected in your policy under each of the determining the applications and the licensing objectives, says that responsible authorities are to be treated as experts in their own fields. You are also entitled, as a matter of law, to rely on an absence of an objection from any responsible authority, and place considerable weight on that. We would obviously ask you to do the same. Paragraph 10.15 of the government guidance deals with hours. And what that says is that ordinarily, shops, stores, supermarkets should be granted a licence to sell alcohol in line with their opening hours. And then the wording at the end of that is, unless there is good reason, good reason, good evidence, to restrict the same. Again, we would suggest that in this case, there isn't. The only other thing that I'll point out from your policy, and again, I know that you know this, but pointing it out, given what's in the reps, is at page seven, quite rightly and in line with the government guidance and the principles under the Licensing Act, you correctly state that you will trade each application on its own individual merits. So if another store is trading in a particular way around the corner, or a mile away, to some extent, that that is irrelevant. It's about this application, this store. In terms of the key features of our stores, we have a Think25 policy. We were the first company to introduce, on a national basis, a age-restricted policy. I can remember, I'm sure you're all too young to remember, the 1964 Act. And around the late 1990s, we sat down with the Home Office, ANACPO as was, the Association of Chief Police Officers, and introduced Think21. We obviously don't believe things static. We were the first national off-licence retailer to move to Think25. And the way that that system works now is it's all linked to our training and to the tills. So whenever a age-restricted product is scanned, the till will freeze, and it requires some form of input from the checkout system. There is a prompt that appears that says, "Think25, yes or no", and so if yes is pressed, it could mean one of two things. The person appeared under 25 and was able to produce valid ID, of the usual forms that you would expect, and there was no other overriding reason to refuse the sale. Or it could mean that the person appeared over the age of 25, and there was no other overriding reason to refuse the sale. If no is pressed, again, it could mean one of two things. They weren't able to produce valid ID when challenged, or there may have been some other overriding reason to refuse the sale. It could be a number of reasons. It could be because the person appeared to be intoxicated, it could be because we suspect there was a property purchase, or it could simply be because the checkout system was uncomfortable in those circumstances, whatever they were. Again, I'll go on to that in a moment. We back up that system with audits, also with point-of-sale material, so where the alcohol is displayed, and up the tills to remind people, and we also back it up with training. In terms of audits, we're doing lots and lots of things involving the area manager and other people, but there are two key ones that are relevant to alcohol sales. Every quarter, every store gets mystery shops using 18 and 19-year-olds in an external company. We can't use 16 and 17-year-olds because we don't have the statutory power to do so. All of those results go to both the area manager and store manager, and to Hardish at head office. If the police want them, we routinely share them with them. On top of that, on a quarterly basis, we have an audit which we call internally safe and legal. And what that's about is looking at every facet of the store and making sure, as it says on the tin, it's safe and legal. In relation to licensing, there are a number of different aspects to this. So, one is if there's a premises licence there, we make sure that all the terms are being adhered to, they're being properly displayed, that we've got a current DPS, et cetera. We will go through the legal requirements over and above the premises licence to make sure those are being adhered to, and then the Tesco processes and procedures, which tend to be a lot higher than mere legal compliance, again, to make sure that those are being complied with. So for example, we typically try and have, even though we're not required to by law, about three personal licence holders in the store. So again, we will check in terms of the rotation, that that's correct, if not, Hardish will be notified. And we will put people through training, so that we've got a number of people there. That gets signed off by the area manager, and then it goes to head office, there's a clear record of that, and again, is a very good safeguard. In terms of training, it's incredibly comprehensive, I'm not going to go through it all, but I'm just going to pick out two key things. Every member of staff gets induction training before they go on the shop floor. That will include in relation to licensing. And so they cannot man one of the checkouts until they've had the appropriate training, and that they've passed the POP quizzes and have been validated as being appropriate to do so. That training comes in the form of a DVD with training materials and online material as well. And what we do is, we sort of play out scenarios, demonstrating what good practice looks like, what bad looks like, and what the consequences of that might be. Not only for the individual who might be prosecuted, but also some of the alcohol harms as well. I believe it's still the only training in the off-licence sector to have won the British Institute of Inkeeping Good Practice Recognition Scheme Award. So obviously, BII being the national body for training in the licence industry. The management team get additional training, so they will get conflict resolution training, not because we expect them to be in a situation where they're regularly having to use it, but it's about empowering people with the right skills so that they can do their job, whatever the circumstances that come up are. In terms of policies, we've got lots and lots and lots of them, I might even mention two, I'll mention them briefly. Firstly, we have a responsible retailing of alcohol policy, which is quite detailed. I can sum that up in the following way. We encourage and empower all members of staff to refuse any sale of alcohol where they have any concern about it whatsoever. I can give you some examples if you want, of things that might seem weird and wonderful, but sort of embody and show how that works in practice. We back that up with probably the most important policy in relation to alcohol, which is a policy of, "We say no, you say no". And what that means, if the checkout assistant has refused the sale of alcohol, and the customer complains to the management staff, irrespective of whether the manager would have come to a different decision, they will always support the refusal. There is no point encouraging, training, and telling people to effectively refuse sales where they have any concerns, and then overruling them. And so, again, I think that speaks volumes, is the stance that we have. Hardish set up, and is a founder member, and I think is still the current chair, the Retail Alcohol Strategy Group, which is all the leading retailers to share best practice and training, and make sure that we are still up at the top in terms of best practice, et cetera. CCTV, we have coloured digital CCTV, we have it in a number of locations. Some of the cameras pan and tilt, some of them are in a fixed position. So over the main entrance, over the main tills, over the alcohol displays, there will always be a fixed camera that is just constantly recording. Some of the others have the ability to be remoted into to follow people around, et cetera. We will have monitors in the store, which are partly for anyone who's on the shop floor, but also partly for the benefit of our customers, so that they know that they're on hand and camera, and are being watched, et cetera. In terms of alcohol, and it's probably an appropriate point to ask you to turn, I think to Appendix B at the back of that, you will find a layout drawing. And I will pause whilst you... What I've done is obviously blown this up slightly to A3 and marked it up. So this is Vargate, which I could probably, I think, point in that direction, I know it's that direction, is it Vargate, I think? Which is just over the road. So this is the main entrance coming in here. You'll see where I have also put the highlighting, here and here are the checkouts. The highlighting there is a spirit display behind the counter, so all spirits are always displayed behind the counter. And then the main alcohol display is here. So again, key features, alcohol displays well away from the main entrance, and in close proximity to where the checkouts are, which will always be manned, whether it's the self-service, or whether it's the actual physical manned tills. To the left-hand side of that plan, you can see incredibly good storage facilities, et cetera. There is a delivery plan that's been agreed, so obviously you will know the restrictions. You can't have deliveries between 10 and 6. We've already mapped that out, and the goods will come through the front of the store, occasion will be taken, and then go to the back. In terms of that as well, we have very few refuse collections from the store, because we recycle about 99% of the waste. It's not something we've done recently, it's something we've been doing for about 20 years. All the waste goes onto the cages, that goes out and goes into the delivery vehicle, which then takes to the recycling centre, et cetera. I've already mentioned the alcohol range, but it's very limited. Majority of it is red and white wine, there will be beers, et cetera, to it within that. But it's designed for that core target market. In terms of employees, there'll be a management team of four. So you'll have Adam, who's been 15 years with Tesco. He's been a store manager for the last three years, and a personal licence holder for a little bit longer than that. He will be moving from his current store that he's been working just on the outskirts of the city, to become here full-time. He will be supplemented by three team leaders who are part of the management team. And then depending on the fixed and part-time ratio of employees, it will be somewhere between 16 to 20. So for a small store, you can see lots of employees. The way that we normally rotate, at the busy times, you would probably have five members of staff on duty, and at the least busy times, two supplemented, where we were able to, with a member of the management team. So very high levels of employees on duty. In terms of antisocial behaviour, our stance to that is quite simple. We do not tolerate bad behaviour. If people behave badly, we ask them to stop. If they won't stop, we ask them to leave. If they won't leave, we ban them and we call the police. We have something called a rogues' gallery, which is as it sounds, we will print off a still from the CCTV, and those people will go into the rogues' gallery, and they will not be coming back in. We have regular contact with the police locally. We think that's key and critical in terms of working partnership with them, and it's very effective. We know Sheffield city centre very well, we know what the issues are. We have several stores in the city centre, some of which operate in exactly the same hours, and do so well without difficulty. In terms of the reps and what's been said, I think in terms of that number of points, I'd just like to tease out. Firstly, it seems that it's predominantly been made on the grounds of public health, and as you know, public health is not a licensing objective. To the extent that there are other issues in that, I'll come and deal with them. There's also a reference in terms of consistency with independent shops that have signed up, which goes back to the each case on its own individual merits. We've listened to what's been said, we've looked for other stores, we've also spoken to the police and the other statutory authorities, and we take a different view to that, which we think we legitimately can. I think the fact that the police in particular, trading standards, and also environmental health, have no objection to those hours, is key and critical. And they are obviously people who are very experienced in dealing with issues, both generally within Sheffield, but also within the city centre. In terms of some of the other steps, et cetera, and the addiction centres, we are aware of all of those. We are well-used within Tesco to operating in areas where there may be issues with vulnerabilities. And again, we like to think that we do it incredibly well. And therefore, for all of those reasons, we would hope that you would grant a licence in line with the application at sort, and particularly from six in the morning. I would also note that part of the reason that the Licensing Act is permissive is because there is the power of review. And therefore, should there ever be a problem in practice, which we certainly don't think that there will be, there is something that you could do about that if someone brought you a review. And hence, we hope you grant the licence. I'm going to quickly check to make sure I haven't missed anything. Over to you for questions.
That's really helpful, thank you. Lewis, do you have any questions?
Yes, please Chair. Thank you very much for that, that answered most of my questions, actually. Just, if the condition was granted to restrict the hours, what would that mean in practice? So what examples are there from any other stores? Presumably, it would mean the alcohol display is cordoned off if the times differ between the opening times and the alcohol times. Could you just go into a bit of detail on that, please?
So I think in terms of cordoning off, there are two arguments about this. We restrict our alcohol sales by our tills, so we would programme a till. So if you were to come up with an alcohol product, it wouldn't scan. So I don't think you would necessarily have to cordon off the display on the basis that alcohol is not available to display de facto for sale, because it can't be sold. I think in practical terms, we would probably have to cordon something off, but you might get customers who might come in and say, "Look, I'm a legitimate customer, you know who I am, why can I buy my food, but I can't buy my alcohol?" So in terms of practicalities, I think that's what would apply. Do we have stores where there is a mismatch between the hours? Yes, we do, but overwhelmingly, predominantly, our stores are aligned in terms of licence hours and also opening hours. What might be the reasons where we would agree to restriction, and we do agree to restrictions? It's typically where the police come to us and say, "Look, there's a problem here. This is the issue, this is the problem, we would like you to start your hours later." And they will have that conversation with Hardish, Hardish will listen to that. Where there is cogent evidence, then we will adapt and amend those hours. And I can give you lots and lots of examples, I won't, you'll be pleased to know. But if you want some of those examples, then I can. But yes, in terms of practical effect, there will be a bit of an impact on the store in terms of that. But the way that we restrict predominantly is everything is programmed through the till.
Thank you. And just in relation to the objective... And just in relation to the objectives, representation, obviously, they're not here. But could you, are you aware of this ATM, ATM policy? And, you know, what type of stores are a part of it in Sheffield, the city centre? Have you done any research there?
I think Hardish is obviously aware of that and we've done a bit of research in terms of it. Now, obviously, there are some stores that are part of it, predominantly independents. I think what we had to weigh up is, we also have stores in the city centre that are not part of it and that are selling until six in the morning and simply do that very, very well because of all the systems and policies that we have. So it's not that we are in any way, shape or form trying to undermine the policy, we're not. We just don't think in terms of that it should be applied. Now, clearly, again, it's not a policy that's in your licensing policy, it's something separate and I'm not criticizing it for that. But obviously, in terms of licensing, it is not a policy that's there that says you cannot apply for a licence before eight in the morning if you're off licence. It's just not in there. It talks about each case being on its own individual merits. And I think if you did try and have a policy in there that said you would never have licence before eight o'clock, it would be slightly challenging anyway unless you had a cumulative impact policy for the city centre where there are reversals of presumptions. So yes, we're aware of it. As I say, the key discussion for us in relation to those sorts of issues, rightly or wrongly, was with the police. You can see in terms of the police, what the police wanted, it wasn't we hadn't offered CCTV. They wanted us to slightly tweak the conditions, which Hardish was very happy to do so. And again, we have a good relationship with them. So I think granting a licence to Tesco at six in the morning is not going to undermine the arrangements that are in place for the independent stores, et cetera. And again, rightly or wrongly, we have a degree of scale and we have a lot more support and other systems. And I'll mention a couple of them. It's obviously Hardish is in charge of a team of, I think, seven people. And we do things where we liaise with people around the country purely in relation to licensing. We have a team of people at head office, again, that look at security issues. Some of those are senior ex-police officers, some are more juniors, some are from a different perspective altogether. So again, one of the other steps that I can mention, that we've, again, it's part of our trying to promote best practice that we've done in the last two or three years, is all the members of staff on the shop floor now wear a body camera, et cetera. They all have headsets and we have a system called safeguard. So what safeguard is, if a button is pressed, which is like a panic alarm, there is a support team that can port into the CCTV system and go over the tannoy system and speak to customers direct and also liaise directly with the statutory authorities. So there's an awful lot that we do and have done over the period, which, as I say, rightly or wrongly, perhaps independents may not be able to do in the way that we do. And therefore, it's not intended to be disrespectful in the sense of we are Tesco, we are not playing ball. It's more, yes, we're aware of that, we've looked at it very, very carefully, we've spoken to a number of people and actually given our existing experience and what we do. And in this specific case, we don't think that's something we can agree to. It's obviously a matter for you as a licensing committee.
Thank you.
Thanks Chair.
Henry.
Thank you Chair. So you said you have the safeguard system where members of staff are able to remotely port in and go over the tannoy. Will you have any additional physical presence at key times from security staff or non-general staff? Because although the representation focuses on public health, there's also an issue for the health of your staff if they're denying an alcohol sale and it causes a confrontation, as is, you know, quite often the case.
Sorry, so again, a number of different facets to that, so I'll try and tease all of those out. So I think first and foremost, we try and have a member of the management team on duty at all times. Secondly, we have quite high levels of staffing, so if it's a busy time, and we will look at it every week and say, one of the things I probably should have said is, each week, Adam will sit down with his area manager and they will just go through the store and they will start planning for the following week or the following month, et cetera. So we will know the area in the store and adapt very quickly to make sure that we're properly resourced. So there are those two elements. The safeguard system is something that is, again, it's Tesco employees who are fairly local and can sort of come in. They may themselves have SAI security if they need to send people to the store. But what we do in terms of security, and we do this with every store around the country, I'll give you some examples, is we carry out a security risk assessment. We've done it for this store. At present, we haven't, at present, we haven't identified a need for security. But that risk assessment gets reviewed as a minimum every eight weeks or wherever there's an incident that requires us to review it or to think again. And obviously, that will go to head office, who will sit down with the area management store manager and we look at it in considerable detail. Of our three and a half thousand stores, very few, I think, have conditions on them relative to that number. Certainly, I would say no more than 20% requiring security presence. If you look at our stores throughout the year, a lot of them will have security presence at some point in the year because we've identified the need. And I'll give you a great example of this, which you might think is a bit weird, but there you go. We have a store in Ascot, on High Street Ascot. And for 51 weeks of the year, it is a beautiful suburban area where I think the crime levels, the people of Ascot are lucky enough to have our incredibly low. So we have no security. There is one week of the year where people from around the country descend on Ascot because they want to go to the races. And so we have two or three security guards here on duty for the currency of Royal Ascot, et cetera. And again, that's indicative of what we do. We're obviously liaising with the police a lot as well. And again, we spoke to them in relation to this application. And again, they didn't say that they wanted any form of security in relation to this site specifically, also understanding what our process is and what we do. So I think for all those reasons, there are a whole series of things. And maybe hopefully, what you can see from what I've been saying is, Tesco try not to rely on one single thing. But they're trying to have lots of different things so that it almost provides a bit of a comfort net. So if one thing fails, there'll be something else as a backup to make sure that issues don't arise.
Well, thank you very much for the answer. One other question. You mentioned that you hadn't seen anything in the local press relating to incidents around the other stores and you also mentioned the one on West Street. Have you seen anything in the local press relating to incidents around the lower end of Fargate and Exchange Street in relation to problematic drinking and retail?
So I personally haven't seen that, but I know that Tesco will be aware of some of that and they're certainly aware of what the issues are in Fargate, et cetera. And as I say, it's not in any way, shape or form to undermine any of that. But again, because of our experience around the country and our systems and the resources we're able to bring to this, we think in this case, but obviously it's a matter for you, that the application as it stands is the appropriate one, et cetera. And again, in terms of the alcohol range, it's very limited. So I think Hardish wants to say something in the main, but in terms of the alcohol range, again, something we've done for years and years and years is where beers, lagers and sliders are sold in standard units and cans, et cetera. So other than speciality products, which are a lot more expensive and premium, we've always sold in four packs. So you can't come in and get a single can. In terms of spirits, again, we don't sell the sort of tiny miniatures. Say for, at certain periods of the year, there might be a gift pack. So for example, you might have something that has a pair of golf socks, three golf balls, golf tees and a tiny thing of whisky. But you don't, just simply, you will never see in the tiny miniatures. So again, everything is designed as to what's our core market, how do we appeal to that? And how do we make sure that we don't attract the sort of customer that we really don't wish to? I think Hardish wants to say a couple of things. And again, some of the work that she's done, probably over the last 15 years or so.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Too long. Yeah, I just wanted to talk about, you know, what goes on locally. So we will work very closely with the police. So if there are particular individuals that cause problems in the area, we won't sell alcohol to them at any time of the day, never mind first thing or last thing or any times that you're kind of concerned about. Our teams will get to know who those locals are very, very quickly. And actually, you know, we don't want that person in our store who's going to cause problems later on, say for the police. Because, you know, they may come in, say, you know, at six o'clock in the morning. But again, we'll know who they are and we just won't serve them any alcohol. That's what we've done in other areas, worked very closely with lots of different responsible authorities in Manchester, for example, because they had huge problems. And again, we know who those street drinkers are and we work with the police so that we're not selling anything to them, any alcohol. Yeah, so I also, I'm a board director for Community Alcohol Partnership. So apart of, you know, apart from the licensing side, I do a lot around responsible drinking. It's part of our kind of core value is how we sell alcohol as Tesco. And that's all around unraged drinking. And if there are hotspots, then we include independent retailers into a training programme. And it's all of the big retailers are a part of that, not just Tesco. But we kind of, it's been going for about 15 years. And where hotspots are identified, then there's a programme that we kind of bring in and involve some of the smaller independent retailers as well. And we provide them with training and support and mentoring so that, you know, we may have a think 25 policy, but we'd encourage them to have a think 25 policy. And also come in and talk to us about how we prevent theft, for example, in store. So that we can provide some of that mentoring support as well.
Thank you for another very thorough reply.
I'll give you two other examples, I said I probably wouldn't mention these, but again, I think it's indicative of the concerns being raised fast down. So there was a period of time where I think both the Today Programme, we'll quite often pick at this up, but it was the Daily Mail that criticised us quite heavily, where we were not allowing certain people in our stores. I can think of two particular places. One was in Cardiff, where within a couple of particular stores, people had decided that it was appropriate to come in in their nightwear. And we were like, no, you're not coming in. If you come in our stores, we expect certain standards of you and certain behaviour. And so they were not admitted. We had something similar on the South Coast where people were coming in in beach wear that was, I think the phrase you might use is slightly risque. And again, it was if you're coming into our stores, there are certain things that we expect from you as customers in terms of this, et cetera. So we do take everything incredibly seriously and very responsibly. And it's also a bit of a two-way street. So yes, obviously, we want to target customers, but we want to target legitimate, responsible customers. And we expect those people that are in our stores to behave appropriately, treat our staff with respect, et cetera. And where they don't, we have systems and training that's there designed to pick that up and deal with it and address it. And again, so I keep saying rightly or wrongly, it's obviously my phrase of the day, I've got it on an auto loop. Rightly or wrongly, we have those systems and that training and that sort of critical mass that perhaps some of the stores don't. But again, that's why, without being arrogant, we have confidence that this is the right application for this location, notwithstanding the local area.
Thank you, that's been incredibly thorough and clear, so it doesn't leave me very much to ask at all, which I'm sure you're pleased about. The only thing that does come to mind is around your good neighbour principle. It sounds like you have excellent working relationships with the local police. I just wonder whether you prattically engage with other representatives, you know, such as the ward councillors or, I think there is a city centre tenants group, which is getting stronger and stronger as more people move in and what opportunities there are for them to talk to you and engage.
So I'll try and deal with this. If you see to my left, Hardish nodding vehemently, you know I've got it wrong, if she's nodding that way, I've got it right, but I'm sure she will chip in as well. So part of that obviously involves local engagement, et cetera, with people. So we have community notice boards, which we encourage local people to be part of. We try and identify where there are key facilities, I'm going to call them, within an area. So if you might have a school, we might reach out to the school. If there are treatment centres, et cetera, we might reach out. So we've got an arrangement with them saying, look, if you have any issues, come and speak to us. I can think of it in Oxford. We've got a store that's round the corner from two drug dependency units. We don't have problems, but we have a good, strong relationship with them, which is based around communication and that works incredibly well. We try and do a lot from a sort of charitable side of things in terms of being a good neighbour as well. So each store will have a community budget and typically we will spend that on either work that might need to be done to a school or church or trying to provide food for certain parts of the community that might not be able to otherwise have some of that. And again, I'm sure Hardish and Adam can give some examples. So yes, we definitely try and reach out to the community. We encourage dialogue with our customers and also have to speak to the ward councillors. The store's got all the contact details, et cetera, on the basis that we think dialogue is incredibly good. Doesn't mean we will always agree with what's being said, but we will always listen. And if we have a different view, we'll try and explain why we have a different view, et cetera. But yes, we do see discourse with both local community, whether that's residents, it can be other businesses. As I say, I've used that phrase facilities for things like schools or churches, et cetera. And again, there are lots of examples around the country where we've got good relations and we do certain things with those organisations probably in that local community.
I think the good neighbour policy is kind of an ethos because it can mean so many different things depending on the location. So I think it's quite a good description to describe how we will behave in the community. So it's not about, it's about looking after our community and doing the right thing by our community as well.
Actually, I've just thought of another good practical example for that. So when I was speaking about deliveries, I said, look, we've been doing it for over 20 years. A large part of the driver for the way that we, driver's probably the wrong word in the context of deliveries, but a key motivation for having that policy where we try not to have any waste collections is not just because it was environmentally beneficial to do that, it just so happened it was. It was more about the impact of our stores. So if we can cut down daily refuse collections late at night, because we can just put it back on the delivery lorry, fantastic, great. It means that the impact of that store is being reduced. Again, I think we were the first company to introduce hydraulics on lorries at the rear and put in rubberised kickplates to reduce noise attenuation so that effectively it's not creating disturbance. So there are lots of examples like that that we could give you where that's part of that good neighbour policy. But I think as Hardish said, it's as much about an ethos and a sort of state of mind about just trying to fit into the community without causing problems and where we can, we try and help.
Thank you, that's really helpful. Sam, is there anything you'd like to ask?
No, that's been really comprehensive, thank you.
Emma, is there anything that you would like to ask?
No, thank you Chair.
Then it's back over to you to sum up your application.
I suppose my summary suggests you've heard the application. We think we're an excellent operator, think it's a very well thought out application. You've got the position of all the responsible authorities, which we'd ask you to pay great weight to. We hear what the ward councillors say, we just disagree and therefore we hope you would grant a licence in line with what we applied for. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Could we have the options then, please, Emma?
Thank you Chair. The options open to the committee are to grant the premises licence in the terms requested, to grant the premises licence with conditions or to reject the whole or part of the application.
Thank you. Could I ask you to now leave with the licensing officer? And as soon as we've made a decision, we'll invite you back in. I suspect it won't be a long way. Thank you for your time and your representations this morning. The decision of the subcommittee is to grant as applied for. And we do so on the basis that you put a very strong case to us for a very well managed retail outlet in the city centre. And we wish you every success with it. And we hope we don't see you in here again for a review. I'm sure you hope not to be here as well.
Absolutely. Can I just say on behalf of Tesco, thank you very much. Thank you to the licensing team as well, who obviously we have lots of interface with for legitimate, normal reasons. But thank you and thank you for the decision.
I'll just finish it off for the webcast as well. Obviously, the people that have objected will have the right of appeal against this decision. So following the hearing, I'll draft a notice which licensing service will circulate, just detailing what was discussed, how members came to the decision and the last date for lodging that appeal. And obviously, as Chair alluded to before, just because a licence is granted doesn't mean it is granted forever. There is the review option. So where we're presented with evidence that the licensing objectives are being undermined, we can review that licence and have various options available to us, but wish you every- But wish you every success and thanks for your time, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.